Jeremy. Jeremy, Jill's on, Jill is in the meeting, so you're gonna have to like just listen, like you know, sit in your corner.
Poor guy.
Sit in the back row.
We're trying.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Let's call the order, the Wednesday, October sixteenth, meeting of the Town Council Study Committee. I was very pleased to discover during the October fifth public forum that I don't really have to read that whole hybrid meeting thing that the select board has abandoned it, so. I guess I can just sort of run, just remind everybody that we are, this is a hybrid meeting, it is being videotaped or recorded, so. Think about what you say and whether you want that, whatever you say to be preserved for posterity. And I guess we can go to acceptance of the agendas, everybody chose second. All right, I think this week we probably have to go around Curtis.
Aye.
Rachel.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Is there anyone, is Jill on there? Jill?
Nope.
Jill's not on yet? All right, well, she's, I think she's coming. Jeff?
Aye.
Beau?
Aye.
Joe, aye. Uh, let's see, the meeting is being recorded. Our first agenda item is review and approval of the minutes for the October second. Uh, meeting that we had, thank you Beau for preparing those. Did everybody have a chance to review them? I know Curtis, you said yet.
Just a minor correction. Uh, the, it's a water commission, not a water committee. That's on key points, I mean, two and three.
Okay. I will try to fix that. Send it out tomorrow evening. Any other comments or issues with the minutes?
Thank you again to Beau. Great job and man. Will approval.
All right. Okay, I have a second?
Sure.
All right, I'll go back the other way. Beau?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Thank you, Tom. Kelly, we're, we're voting on the minute, so you can try to have your.
I should say, what would be the right?
Did you get a chance to read?
I did read it, yeah.
Um, are you okay with them?
Yeah.
Rachel?
Aye.
Curtis?
Aye.
All right, Joe, aye.
Aye.
Um, all right, well then, that's sort of, I think, is all the housekeeping. The, we actually have, I, I put four items on the agenda, I'm more than happy to chat about almost anything that folks would like to talk about relating to the public forums. My, you know, my sense certainly, the October fifth Saturday one seemed to go pretty smoothly. Jeff did a great job doing Thursday the tenth. Any, any open, just sort of open thoughts and comments on the public forum?
We thought it went so well, we thought we should have them more often. Did you mention that? Like maybe weekly?
Real bi-weekly.
Why so? Who's we?
No. Semi-weekly.
No, they did do well.
We, we felt that it, not only was it good because it generated uh, ability for more public members to. Learn about this, but also that it um, increased a sense of openness that we're. You know, that it's a good, it's good PR, you know, for the, the cause. Um, and it keeps us in the awareness, public awareness. And uh, the conversation seemed like it was helpful. So, what about the idea of having more of them?
I'm, I'm happy to do more, I'm not sure I, I.
Well, maybe one.
Devils, I'm not sure we need to do it every other week.
How about once in November and once early December?
Yeah, I mean, I could see once.
Everyone will be breaking for holidays, you know, after the middle of December, I guess.
I mean, I, I found it valuable, I think it's interesting to hear how voters, citizens, um. You know, there were, there were questions, there were comments, there were sort of comments for, comments against in both of the sessions. You know, I think it's good to hear people, how it, how it sort of strikes people.
It wasn't my idea, but I can't remember whose idea it was, but a couple of us were reflecting on that.
Joe?
I, I think it would at least be useful to do, especially when we hit. Kind of major milestones and where we are in like the work plan, so I think. You know, as we get through the next section that has like the citizen participation section, may be a good one because it addresses a lot of. Some of the questions that came in, especially in the Thursday forum, about how people will be able to participate in the new system. And I think once those are, those discussions are had to get some feedback or to see what other issues or questions those bring about, may be good, and then as we kind of chip away. At the rest of it, it may be good to throw in there. I know historically speaking, for our stuff, December meetings are. Pretty lightly attended, there's a lot of competing. A lot of competing events and interests in December especially, just with Christmas and the holidays that. We've always had kind of light attendance for December things from time to time. I think there may be some value too, at some point, just doing a potentially an all online one, just for people to register. Do it through Zoom, so no one has to travel, maybe an option too, but I don't think it hurts to do a few more at least.
Yeah, I just think we want to have enough additional stuff to talk about, I mean. I would, I would think, you know, we're gonna have another couple of weeks or maybe a month and a half, I guess, if we have two meetings a month. To try to make some more progress on the charter and get that, you know, if we're half done now. And we still have a, a rough goal of getting it kind of completed by December, January. I don't know, I guess I would, I would think you'd want to do another public forum in a month at least, maybe six weeks, so, which takes you pretty close to. Getting one in before the holiday, maybe, and one after the holiday.
Well, how about mid to the third week in November, when you're saying drop December? Sort of.
But I mean, I'm just one person here, but.
Well, I think your point is, where are we? What do we have in show? And depending what we.
I mean, I just, I just think it would be better for us to be able to say, okay, here's our third and fourth public forum and. The charter's all done, or the count, I don't. Add living here, but um, you just have, I think it'd be better to have more to talk about than simply do it over again and let.
All right, I don't know. Whatever. Libby's.
I'm not, I'm not, you know, but if you guys want to do more, I mean, I'll. I think there's many.
But we have Libby in person next time.
Next.
Not Zoom, but in person, in the room.
She said in person.
Yeah.
Unless, unless something changes, she said in person.
Um, so I, I took better notes for the first forum because there's a lot of. Think it was the first one, so I could add some of that to this, and I did take a look at some of them, but. If we did another one as a general, would it make sense then? If we moved farther in the charter as we move, if a forum was focused just on that. Section of the charter that we've sort of already talked about, so it's not an all encompassing, because there's a lot to unpack in this. So like, if it's like section one, and if it's a small section, do one and two, and then do forums like once a month that way, if our goal is not town meeting anymore, we can. Spread that out, but that way it's more focused in a way.
And when we announce it in the paper, we can specify the focus, which gives more information. And makes people feel more interested in that specific part of it.
Yeah, I mean, your presentation that we kind of gave input on and stuff was, you know, it's a good overview, but people are, a lot of this stuff is very, you know. Hyper-focused on a specific example or a commission or appointment somewhere, but that could kind of be hashed out in the section so that. It's a little more um.
Oh, there were, since there are some, a lot of questions that we didn't fully have. Um, answers to, I think, scheduling more public forums as a way to, for us to say, yes, we are here. Answering those questions, and it's a public conversation that we're in, we're a part of that conversation, so I think. It makes sense just from that standpoint that we would schedule another general one to get into some of these things, and then I love that idea of. Having one or two that follow the progress of the charter building.
Well, it strikes me also that I think both forums have people who are questioning about how will the public have a chance to um. Interact with the town council, how do they, what are, what are the avenues of appeal? Things don't go the way the public likes, um, so, you know, we're gonna be getting through that over the next meeting or two with the Collins Group. That might be a, a central kind of subject for the, for public forum.
Well.
People were, were curious about it, so.
One of the ways, like in Barnstable, you can call for two hundred signatures, you can call it. Town meeting for information, it's not a referendum, but it's an information.
Right, but we haven't, in terms of developing the charter.
Yeah.
You know, wherever we are.
No, I understand.
We haven't really made those decisions, it seemed to me, if we go through a couple of sessions with the Collins Group and. Talk about, you know, how many signatures do you need, and whether we want to have a referendum, and I forget the other three or, you know, two sort of. Processes that.
Well, I know Barnstable did do one on that big housing project and two hundred signatures, and they. Had a town meeting and people could speak, but it was not a vote, it was a feedback kind of thing.
Right.
But the public could say, we want to have more to say, so something along that line, ultimately, I think. Will appear in our charter, I hope.
But I just, I, all I'm saying is, I think it makes sense that we make decisions about, okay, we think part of these two hundred signatures, okay, to get a referendum, you have to do this. And do we or don't we want to have these sort of information session? Town meetings. And then we can, you know, then when you have your next public forum, you say, well, we've met and the charter is now two thirds or three quarters done, and. One of the main subjects we wanted to tell you about is how the public interacts with the town council, how. What is the, the sort of the rights of appeal or?
Well, Joe, do you want to, before each of those public forums, you want to have something written? You know, frequently asked questions, issues that we decide on, and that could tailor, curtail the conversation. Gives people more stuff to chew on before they talk to you, and they could actually make the oral presentation.
Well, good point, and one of the things I thought we would try to do today is, we have. Some of the, some of the questions we got at the two sessions, uh, I didn't get it all done, and. I guess what I was hoping we could do is have everybody take a handful of them and, you know, take three or four each, answer them. Um, send them back to me, I'll act as the editor, sort of put it all together, and then we can get it up, up on the website.
Yeah.
No, I, I think the one thing that would be nice too is, we do additional public forums is to take the repetitive issues. Right, Beau, right, because I think. I think Saturdays was interesting in a sense where there was a real interest. And, you know, you were to establish a theme of that meeting, there was a real interest in an elective. Executives, whether it's a mayor or president of the council, or whoever that was going to be, there seemed to be a real interest. In that to maybe have some focus to how we led to the decision we did, or maybe a comparison of what. The proposed system is against the current system for that, and then I think the second forum was. Much more involved with citizen engagement and checks and balances within the system. To almost take the presentation that there is, move out the, how we got here part. Say, well, if you missed it, you missed it, you can watch that meeting, and now we're gonna go from that section to. These were our real frequent topics that came up, and then as we moved through each section of the charter, that may make sense. And then we can have the posted FAQ as well, because I do agree with Jeremy that some of these are going to be repetitive. And if we can just address them upfront through either publication or presentation. To try to move on from some of them.
Yeah, right.
Right, sorry.
My first reaction when we were talking about posting more public forums was, could it be supplemented or complemented by? Virtual or just other, other mechanisms for people to engage with? Um, and I think that's like recurring questions, having that posted somewhere, I don't know, how, how stuff. Sort of like circulated to the community and like this, in our context, like if we had a fax, that's just a website that people are going to, or? Is it, is it?
So we, we have a webpage on the, the town website.
Yeah.
And um. I know we sent it, and I'll have to double check to see if it got posted, posted the, kind of the working draft charter that we had up for people to read. There's also space. When we put together the page of questions and answers of that, we get posted there.
Yeah.
And then like our email address is available, there's a little contact us box, um, I can say as of. About two forty-five, we still get to receive an email, but the opportunity is there for folks to do so.
I'll do a test email right now.
No, I, I've already done that, it does work.
We need to promote that more, I don't think people know. That there's a website and that there's a chance to go to email, so maybe another letter to. The media to say, hey, if you want to have something to say here, a couple of avenues to get into us directly.
Yeah, like a little baby announcement or something.
Uh, Donna, I see you've got your hand up, so uh, sorry.
Hi, everybody. Um, a couple of things. The, um, the first one is, I think that's a great idea to continue public forums. Because the more we have, I think the more people would become interested in attending. Um, and the other thing is, and I had sent, I wonder if folks think it's a good idea. To do an organizational chart, to simplify the process, in other words. Here's what's happening now, and then here's what we're proposing, and then just compare them. Because as we're always saying, we're trying to keep everything similar as much as we can, and as far as the commissions. You know, there were, there was somebody who was concerned about at-large versus uh, precinct. Well, we could create, maybe, we could create commissions, a commission from Wisconsin, a commission from Mattikit. And also a, a commission of non-voting taxpayers, so everybody feels like they can still have a voice, maybe that would help.
Well, I, I, that rubs me the wrong way to have commissions of neighborhoods. Um, my, my first thought is that that's. It's uh.
Divisive.
A divisive.
Yeah, that was more in terms of um, having all of them be what, at um. Through representative as districts instead of a mixture. Um, and I couldn't remember, we didn't completely decide if they were all at large or did we?
Well, I, I thought that when we had that conversation and we selected nine as the number of town council, is that we, we basically, nine at large. It's too hard to figure out, you know, precincts and different districts or whatever.
Three-year term.
And, and yet there were two, I can't remember, there was certainly the one lady in the, in the Thursday session, who was immediately added about. Precincts, and I think she's the one who sent me an email earlier in the, in the, in the fall, uh, I don't remember her name. I, I guess personally, I'm still kind of on the page that at-large makes more sense for a place like Nantucket, I mean. Given where year-round people tend to concentrate, I, I think it would be really hard, even. Just really hard to find precincts and, you know, you'd end up with that, as we talked.
That's what I thought.
Terry, Terry Vander looking.
Yeah, that's what I thought we had settled on, but I didn't, I couldn't a hundred percent remember, I did want to. Quote something if it was maybe one of those, go back to decide later, but I think that was also part of why we're, I mean, we didn't. Representative town meeting is sort of a step, but it's not really getting. The, I guess the cons of our current con, our current town government. Fully addressed in terms of the efficiency and all of that, so you'd still have the town meeting process and stuff, so. I think one of the questions relates to the districts as the members, and one also relates to how. The precincts or districts would also tie into the representative town meeting, and that's why we sort of completely just. Went around that, so that's a question, and that came up a lot. For a lot of the forums, as people kept mentioning representative town meeting, so addressing that. But I'm, I'm sort of with Caroline on the neighborhood thing, I, I get why people think, you know. Mattikit's different than Wisconsin or Tom Nevers or whatever, but it's not like they're gonna carve a line, and it's gonna say, okay, Mattikit, you, you have one representative. There might not be enough voting there, and it would encompass a whole lot more. So I, I would more answer that question to say, if they truly feel that they need a person to represent on the council, then they would. Band together as their neighborhood and support whomever is running for the council.
Right, so you can, you can have, have somebody who happens to live in Mattikit or Wisconsin sort of run and say, well, I live in Mattikit and. You know, I want to keep an eye out for issues that may affect Mattit differently than the rest of the island, but I'm, I'm not sure you need, I think what you're saying is.
Yeah.
We don't need to like.
I don't think we need to.
Sort of, you know, yeah. Yes.
I, I tried to do some analysis about this, and if you remember, you have to have at least four hundred people. And I'm thinking of the thirty people who might live in Wisconsin. That would mean that the Wisconsin, quote, district would include Quinnet and Pulpus.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
So, um, it really. People who think they just want to do it for Mattikit, Wisconsin, aren't gonna get it anyway.
Right.
But the point is, you can support people who have those concerns, as you said, so I think I'm leaning. Back more to at-large, um. I was thinking of precincts and at-large hybrid for a while, but.
I wonder if Nancy Holmes could give us some, um. I don't, I don't know if they've got sort of distribution or density or, didn't we already see that?
Yeah.
We did.
I haven't seen it, but I mean, your IT people could create. Six or eight districts out of there.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering, if, if the map of distribute, of sort of where people live is, you know. Eighty percent of them live within a mile and a half of downtown, which is, would be my guess. Um, and then everything else that runs out to the ends of the islands, Mattit, Wisconsin, is gonna be, at least in terms of year-round residents, pretty sparse, would be my guess.
And we had the graph that the Collins Center provided, but I, I didn't. I wasn't sure if the select board elections were on there, but all the others were on there, and they had the map that showed the, kind of the concentration of where those candidates were, and I think that's what. Somebody had suggested in post, that we put that up on the website as well, to help answer that question, and why. We did look at that data, and it just doesn't seem to kind of support why people would want it, it doesn't, it doesn't directly solve that. Solution, solve that problem as a solution.
There are already neighborhood associations that people have, and those associations are active to some degree. And you're gonna get a lot more lobbying from those groups. Because they're lobbying legislative, they're not lobbying executive. So I think, you know, that dynamic is gonna change, and the groups that aren't as politically active. Were probably gonna become, so, so I don't, I mean.
That, that's a very good point.
Actually, can you spell that out?
So, as a neighborhood, it's like, my, my parents live in Shimo, and once a year, they go to a Shimo Association meeting, right?
Yeah, we went to it.
Right, exactly, you guys, you guys went there. So, at Shimo, there's a lot of, you know, people there concerned about the roads, the thing, the yada, yada sewer, in one of them. And so, um, and by the way, when the sewer came up. Pulpus, those people were concerned about the price and how much their betterments would be.
Yeah.
And those people lobbied Mattfee and whoever else, who was very conservative about the, about the cost of it all. Um, so I think, I think that this whole problem that we're discussing, I think it just.
Can I amplify this? Because today, the non-voting taxpayer, for instance. They can go as a member of public to the executive branch, they can go with permission. Once a year to the legislative branch, under this new system, they can go to any meeting to, which will be the legislative branch.
Correct.
So in many ways, what you're saying about these neighborhood commissions, they will have more power and more audience. Under this new system of government than on the existing system of government.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I have a representative.
Yeah, Tom, I know, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom, I, I took your hand, I was waiting for a break, so.
Okay, I, I, I'm gonna sound like Jeremy here, because he says this quite often, but I'm not sure what problem we try, be trying to solve. With, with precincts. Um, I think that would, that would cause divi- divisions in the community, and those. People who wanted to run and serve would be. Rather beholden to their, their parts of the island, and on the graphs that we saw, has been stated before. That a lot of the population is in certain places, I, I just think this is an absolute disaster waiting to happen. And then on the, um, on the commissions or what have you for neighborhood groups, I can tell you that I hear from the Wisconsin Civic Association all the time. I hear from the Mattit concert, especially the Mattit folks, all the time. Um, so they are very active in pursuing. Their agenda, not in a bad way, that, that sounds a little uh, loaded, I don't mean it in that way, but what, what they're interested, whether it's. The sewer or PFOS in the dump or what have, we hear from them all the time. So I, I think that's six of one, half a dozen of the other, um, and I also, I guess my last comment would be. I don't remember that we actually decided that nine counselors was the right number. Um, I am still on the, and, and I defer to the will, the will of the majority of the committee, but I still think that seven, five or seven. Is a better number for a number of reasons, but that, that's probably a subtopic, um, but I just wanted to re, bring that back up.
Well, just let me say, I, thank you, Tom, um, I, I'm not for precincts, I mean, my sense is almost all the comments have been against precincts, I just think we need to. For folks, citizens like that, a lady whose name I can't remember, who is for precincts, we need to come up with a. What's our answer, why we think at-large is the better route?
To that's all I broke, right?
Well, we gotta show our work on that.
The access thing that we've been talking about. Uh, is the answer. Um, and remember, we went to Wisconsin, there's a very powerful group. But as Beau said, you can go right in, and the associations can go right in and speak to legislation. Though I, I think the precinct thing can go very much to the back of the table.
All right, well. Come on.
Um, yeah, seems like an obvious one to end up on, like the FAQ area, but I like your, Rachel's distinction of like, why we didn't pick representative town, or why we're. We veered away from the idea of what representative town government and why we're not doing by precinct, like there's two questions there that both. Need, um, like an answer that we can always kind of.
Donna, you got your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think we've took, with this discussion, everybody's come up with reasons why we don't have to do precincts. If you listen back to what you've all said.
Right.
And the other thing is, I'm not too sure how many people really want precincts, I mean, that was Patty Deugster. I believe, who wrote to you and, and spoke at the meeting Thursday night, Joe. And uh, uh, clearly she wants uh, precincts, but maybe that's in the minority anyway. But you've just come up with three or four reasons why we decided at-large, that's it.
I think in the FAQs, whoever, however we divvy up these questions, we need to sort of have a concise answer why we, we've. We've wrestled with the issue, we, we've discussed it, and we don't think it really makes sense for Nantucket, so. Yeah, that was my question. Actually, Tom brought up another subject that I, I did want to get to, I think was in the, in the agenda, and that's the, the number of town counselors. I, I thought that we did sort of, I don't know, more or less vote on nine as the number, but. There was certainly some pushback, I thought, or in both of the sessions about why nine, and there's not the right number.
I don't think we took a vote. I think we were discussing it, we kind of left it as a dangling.
I thought I made the notion that we did nine.
Oh, we had, well, I don't, I don't really remember, to be honest, but it did seem to come up, and, and Tom, and Tom just raised it as, as, you know, in terms of his opinion. What do people think? I mean, there's. Well, I, I don't entirely buy Erica, Erica Mooney's comment about, you know, we have so much trouble getting. Candidates for her positions, nine is too many, I know, I think you get them, but maybe nine is too many, I don't know.
I think five is way too small. I'm, I'm at nine.
I, I certainly have reason to think that Erica Mooney. Knows what she's talking about, and she's right there, you know, dealing with that stuff on the ground. Um, so I, I listened to that pretty carefully, um, and I've, I've heard other people wonder about that too, we've heard, we've heard people talk about. Um, and I've I've heard other people wonder about that, too. We've heard, we've heard people talk about. Um, well, gee, it's hard enough already to get. We were concerned about it and that's why we had Collins talk to us about, we have a chart from Collins that says. They show how many people are running um for each of the. Positions that we have now, and it seemed to us like it was a low number and they reassured us that. It's a, it's enough of a number to be a democratic process. So we we had convers- conversation about that. In the beginning, I know. Um, I think if nine is too large, it's better to go with five because it isn't. Better to go with seven because it isn't five and five is what we have. And I I guess, Donna, you and I disagree. I think having some points of distinct difference. As we proposed town council over town meeting is a good idea because it helps people to understand that there that. Really, this is a different system, and I think that that could be a selling point rather than a detracting point. So I would go for seven over five.
Any other com- any other preferences? I I'll be honest, I think I I think. So I remember the meeting. I was pretty wishy washy, I was wishy washy between seven or nine. And the only reason I think I sort of jumped jumped in with a group of people that were on focused on nine is that. It does sort of create more diluted political power um. With nine people than seven or five, but um.
So, Joe, can we maybe just unpack this for a second? It seems like the argument against nine. Is we can't get enough qualified people to run.
Concern that they're.
That is one concern as to getting too many people on accounts. And the issue I've been thinking about is how much are you going to pay me? Because today. In Nantucket, people get a different form of currency because they're going to pay you, you pay three thousand dollars a year. And they work many hours a week. I don't know if it's twenty plus hours, but it's a lot of, a lot of time. So you have to assume those people. Yes, they have in the goodness of their heart, but there is some other form of currency, social. Concern about something on, you know, whatever it will be. And I think if you could remove that form of currency and replace it with financial currency. You can then attract more people. And so I think in many ways, as you answer this question, you got to figure out. Well, what are, what are we asking these people to do timelines? What are we compensating them for that? Right? And I think I I just happen to believe that's an important thing to discuss.
I mean, I I do as well, and I I think that the compensation for the. Proposed town counselors is something that at least Anthony and the college group have said, well, that's sort of part of the end of our. Charter sections and it's a transition session, section um. I mean, I personally, I'm sort of with Jeremy. I mean, I think that the compensation for town counselors ought to be more, you know, significantly more general than. We pay select board members um. I I think some of the anecdotal or or maybe more than anecdotal information is that. Of the thirteen town council town manager meetings. The compensation sort of ten to fifteen thousand dollars, uh although Curtis, I think you came up with some towns that are paying higher amounts.
Oh, well, and there were some towns that are paying um thirteen. Um, and some that are paying up to thirty, but the range. Is fifteen to thirty and I'm sort of in the middle of that with twenty-ish. Um, which is sort of times what you're getting now.
Sorry.
I know, I I think we're making an assumption about what people would do or not based on select board and. Council is not select board, that's why we're here. So the compensation is different, the type of. Power is different. I I I just think we're making an assumption that people won't run. We don't actually know that and. I would lean more towards nine to get the more diverse groups, to get the associations to support in person in their area plus. Regular, you know, in the middle. I don't know, I I I agree with you. I think nine provides. A larger range of skills and dilutes the power a little bit.
Jill, sorry, I I saw your hand was up.
It's all right. Um, I was just wondering if we can put it in there to have a certain number, but then the charter could say it could go to a higher. Number if needed. Uh, the reason I. My my gut, I think I'm just so used to select board, right? I'm used to a smaller group. But I um and I definitely think they should be at large. I I. For sure, I'm, that's my personal opinion. Um, but. Government is not supposed to move fast, which I know you guys keep saying, oh, you can go lightning speed, we go so fast and, you know, I just don't believe in that. So the more people we have, the harder people have to work to compromise. And it might take a little longer and I just think that that's a good thing. So I like it being. Actually, at nine, but I I guess my question is, could you start it at seven and say it could go up to eleven? In the charter, is there flexibility for that?
I don't know, but that that'd be a question. For Anthony, for Anthony.
That's pretty amorphous, so I mean, I think you got to pick a number and amend it, and you can amend it.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's fine. I would just err on the side of more. I think it's good for people to have to compromise instead of saying the same three people are going to vote together all the time.
That's per space of.
Yeah, well, so. The market really is healthcare plus the stipend. So healthcare is like a twenty two thousand dollar, twenty four thousand dollar plan a year. Um, the Blue Cross Blue Shield that they get. And so you have to factor that into the market of whatever you're paying. And if we're going to do that, then actually, it's a big incentive, so. I'm with Jeremy on that because. What is the currency otherwise? So what is it? And if you look at what happens after a career in the select board, a lot of times. They move on to, you know, careers that are different than the career they came in with. So I mean, there is, there is some access that you get. From being on the board that people want.
It's not a bad thing.
No, it's not a bad thing. I mean, you you have, you develop relationships while you're on the board. And that's what you, that's your currency. So is it worth paying?
Well, can I just make one point that I just don't, I I agree with what you're saying about paying them. I. I just don't think that should drive the number of people. I think the number of people that we have on a board should be consistent with. How we want the board to operate and then worry about what we're going to pay them and. If we think that. We, you know, we we just have to decide on the number, I guess, is what I'm saying. I don't think we should say, oh, a salary is going to drive the number. Because we can pay them, we have enough money to pay them, so I'm not worried about that if.
Well, and and also, I think. Any number we think about in terms of stipend or compensation. I think it ought to be more significant than we pay the select board now, but it isn't going to be a full time job kind of compensation. We're still looking for people that are going to. Have got another job, you know, another job to to work themselves. Um, I just think a number that. It may be a little more of an incentive and is a little closer to the. You know, compensating these these potential counselors for the time they're going to. You know, commit to this. I mean.
Yeah.
Apparently, all the, all the comments that Tom has made over the, these meetings are very persuasive. I mean, I. I think all five of our select board members work really, really hard. Um, I think, and I think possibly, I don't know whether the town town council is, they're going to work harder, but they certainly, I think we have an opportunity to compensate for that.
To the church, Tom. Um, I'm, Tom, I'm wondering if if you could say anything about. From your perspective, what would be different that would in a town council system that would attract more. People to run so that we could have nine good counselors.
Well, I don't necessarily think any, so Nantucket's a little funny because. If one wants to be a, I I agree with the with the comments on social capital and meeting people and all that. Yes, you do. I was just. We just had a a housing roundtable with Secretary Augustus and EO HLC and Senator Seer and. Soon to be Rep Mowgli and and the the soon to be rep from the fourth district, Sarah Peak's seat and. Like, I was just with them and then at CPC before that, so it was like all day select board stuff, which is great. I love it. Um, but I think, like, so that's all part of it, but I think. I think one thing that's been hard for me to articulate and I'll do, I'll try my best to do it right now and to make it. Somewhat brief is that. One thing about select board is that we do, I agree with all the comments, we do put in of on a lot of time and. I knew what I was signing up for. I I I this, this is, I do enjoy it, et cetera, et cetera. But if you vest the legislative body into us. It's, what's very hard to describe is that the the headspace of being a select board member, and I know that's like. Not something you put into a charter, but just thinking of people running. So I'll give you an example. Our Island Home, right? It's going to come up on on town meeting ballot. It's going to be somewhere there about a hundred million dollar ask. There are, there are arguments for and against it. We're the last municipally owned skilled nursing facility in the Commonwealth. Um, because it's expensive and staffing and all these things and and there is a good reason to have it. And I think that if you put those kinds of decisions that. And short term rentals and all the acrimony and your neighbors saying this and all that in a place where. There's a lot of people struggling on Nantucket, but for the most part of people who run for uh for offices like select board, right? They're in a fairly okay spot, right? Because they have some time. To to do it, like, you don't see a lot of teachers running for select board because you have meetings during the day. You have et cetera, et cetera. There's all these. Kind of natural self-selecting boundaries to it, and I worry that whether it's seven or. Uh, the reason I worry about the higher number is that. There is so much to learn. Um, you know, I I had a meeting on Monday with with cultural heritage partner. Partners on the wind turbine stuff. That is very legally heavy and dense, and if you don't do your homework to go in there and try and make a good decision. Um, it it's a lot and and I I I'm worried that with nine or a higher number, you're going to. Constantly constantly be relying on staff opinions and 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 whatever happens in the meeting and and. And that may be just part of the process. Um, so I, anyway, all all that, I'm throwing a lot of stuff against the wall, but it, I I can tell you there's a select board member. If 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 I were a town counselor and had to had to. Deliberate and really consider some of these and it was and it was the executive and the legislative inmate, it's going to be a very large. Thing, headspace and and prep and homework and all that stuff. Um, and and I I worry about who's going to do it and how good a job they're going to do it, and I think that the layer of town meeting. As sort of, for all the reasons we've articulated that it that it doesn't work sometimes. It is sort of like a wisdom of crowds factor, right? So that the it it, there are some pluses to it. So anyway, I I um I don't throw all that out for for any like, oh, well, this is exactly what you should do. But I I just feel per Caroline's question that that to. That I want to try and do my best to articulate. It's very difficult unless you're in it to get that. But maybe some of you have been other other positions where you can relate. I don't know, but anyway.
Thank you. I'll I'll play devil's advocate, because Tom likes to, so I'll play it against Tom now. And thinking what he's saying. I, his argument could also be what supports why we would go to council and why you would do nine. So if you're now responsible to make those decisions as the council and it's not going out to town meeting and you're not a select board member and. Then you're asking the community at large who has none of that. In-depth knowledge, none of that meetings, none of that conversation to then make some of those decisions on the finances or things like that. So you're actually putting the responsibility in people who have less. Uh, exposure, I guess, of the topic. And then if you have nine, you might be able to, like, you're right, the Vineyard Wind, there's, there's a lot of big. Things coming up, but isn't that where a lot of times you create these? Because everybody loves committees, you would create something where you have a rep or two on there to help kind of guide. Some of the members. You're not expecting all nine of them to be experts on every subject that comes forward to them. So I almost feel like you're. In a way, Tom's argument also supports why you would want to have nine. To help digest all of that and make well-informed decisions rather than placing it in the hands of people who aren't. As in tune or aren't able to take the time to digest that knowledge.
Also, what Tom described was the the wisdom of the aggregate, like in any market, like a stock market or a bond market. Where you have this amazing predictive ability within the aggregate. And you're not losing that in the system. You're, we're doing exactly what. Tom's describing. Just by. Uh, dwelling on these questions from the people that were there. I mean, we're doing, we're doing this. Exercise and that's exactly what the town council is going to be doing. To the same. Degree.
You could have, I would also, sorry.
Oh, no, no, good.
I'm not going.
No, I like your.
I would also say that it's a um. I I sort of just lost my train of thought.
Well, my my comment was um. When you come back to the question of short term rental. It's not going to be decided by nine people. You're going to have. Meetings and forums and public sessions and commission and referrals, so. You're still going to get a great deal of what you get at town meeting. But then ultimately, with an informed. Group, you're going to make the decision, somebody's got to make the decision. So I still think you're going to have. All the interaction that you want, whether it's Vineyard Wind or the Island Home, you're not going to just have nine people making.
Yeah, I don't, I can't see, they're not going to show up on Tuesday and say, well, you know, oh, we have to vote on Ireland Home today. You know, it's it's that whole, those sort of projects and those sort of initiatives in the town that require lots of money and lots of consensus are going to have. For committees and. There's no, no way I would, if I was a town counselor, I would want to just say, you know, I'm, I've got lots of power, I'm just going to vote this. Who cares what, who cares what my constituents think? And and, you know, if I'm going to make a consequential vote, I better have plenty of facts and figures behind it. Um, and have educate the population as to why this is the direction the town council thinks we're going to go, so.
And I just remembered my, sorry.
Oh, go for it first, go.
When Bo mentioned aggregate and stuff, a lot of the other thing that happened, I think, and I think it was the first forum, was there was a lot of talk about how to. Create uh or how to prevent the popularity contest and the friends interest and the special interests and things like that. How to prevent the corruption, I guess that was a a lot that came up and to focus on special interests, and I think that might be. The example, I guess, for short term rentals and, you know. Who is in what industry in the community that's also sitting up on the board is being reflected in that and their their opinions is some of their examples, so. I would also argue that with a group of nine, you're sort of. Allowing that special interest to not be as strong. So if there are a few people who do strongly think one way. Like how we are, if we were only a group of five, I think that we would have a lot less debate on some of these conversations and we're sitting here having. This is probably one of our four or five different conversations on how many council members. So now if you're looking at somebody like a major project in the community, obviously, that's not going to be a couple that I I just feel like. A little bit more of a. Oh, the larger you get, the more representative you get of the overall community's feelings. So that at least there's a voice there that's kind of representing the different views to help. Compromise and figure out what the best ways the community is going for. So that's why I would lean more towards nine as well.
Good. Good, so I'm going to. I'm I'm going to join the devil's advocate team for a second because I. Have very similar thoughts, but from a little different perspective, and I think. With it in, with the number and one of the themes that came out a little bit. From the Saturday, he mixing up the Saturday and Thursday, what we're talking about this, the third, the Saturday meeting. Um, someone brought up and I think Tom was getting into it a little bit, the the demand on the individual counselors and the pressure that's. Put forward on them to deal with these issues and. Rachel talked about the ability to create committees and to to do things and deal there, but I I think. This is going to sound really glib when I say it. If this was a completely unproven system of government, I think those questions are really valid. But this is not an unproven system of government. This is something that is applied. Not only in in larger communities, but nationally, worldwide, it's, we've seen it, and those are the same pressures. I know Nantucket's unique and they're. not only in, in larger communities, but nationally, worldwide, it's, we've seen it. And those are the same pressures. I know Nantucket's unique and the unique pressures that are involved with that, but you're always going to ask, and I think that's where you try to incentivize getting the best and brightest to come in and people that can handle that. Um, or hopefully handle that, you know, I think our select board does a, a great job in balancing those, but being able to gain that knowledge that's necessary. And I think one of the really great parts of the system and to kind of touch on Jill's comment earlier is speed and efficiency are sometimes two very different things. And I think this system highlights that to some degree where you gain both. And I think short-term rentals is a really good example of this where we've had now, I want to say three annual town, no, two, three annual town meetings and two special town meetings where short-term rentals have come up for discussion. And what makes that discussion inefficient is you have a forced decision point that's there and you have a moment in time where you are forced to make a decision. And then if you don't, you're waiting either for a next special or next annual town meeting before you can revisit that decision again. The efficiency of the new system comes in an effect where if those questions are still there or those work groups haven't worked through, or you haven't gotten to that point, you can move that decision point as many times as you need to, to get the job done. And that's where you create the efficiency, not in time and waiting. And when the public is ready and it's there, and then you can build in a safeguard if people don't like the decision to say, we don't like the decision. I mean, I think that's where those efficiencies come in. And I think those issues really highlight where that comes to be. And it's, it's interesting in a sense. You know, where, where I deal with professionally with a regulatory board, all of our other regulatory boards have a mechanism to continue the conversation, to get more information and to get more educated on a specific topic. And then get to the decision point with the right amount of information that hopefully the folks that are aboard of, like the CONCON is seven, the HDC, I want to say is seven with associates, planning board is five, that those groups get to the decision point and have that information. That's really one of the great strengths of the system. That's a really long answer to my, that question. But I mean, that's just, listening to that, I, I think all those concerns are valid, but I think they can all be addressed relatively efficiently.
And just to pile on, I mean, I also think that the, one of the beauties, uh, uh, the efficiencies of the town council is they will gather all this information, they will educate themselves, they will reach out to the community and at some point they'll make a decision. And, you know, and they'll say, well, we're going to do it this way. And maybe this way works, or maybe this way it doesn't work. And then then go back and reconsider and, and come up with plan B or it's plan C. I mean, and part, part of what is frustrating just about the short-term rental thing to me is it's taken, as you say, three years or four years and you could have, we could have tried some things by now, but.
Or I think it's also interesting too to deal with it. If you make a change in the discussion, it's a lot nicer to be able to say, well, let's get a clean copy of it. We'll post it and in two weeks we're going to sit back down with all of that. So everyone can see what that clean version looks like or with amendments in or out. And you lose a level of confusion where you're asking people to react and adapt on the fly to things where you can say, we only need to wait two weeks. We don't need to wait eight months to revisit this decision again. And I think that's a nice efficiency that's there. And yes, it makes it move faster, but I think that's where the efficiency comes in.
Okay. Um, one of the other subjects, and I think Caroline reminded me of it was, there were a couple of folks during both sessions that talked about why didn't we go with a mayor city council form as opposed to um, town council, town manager? Um, and I guess my simplistic view was that we we really didn't want to get that political, you know, in terms of having an elected mayor. Um, is that a good enough answer or well, a comment?
Um, an elected mayor is a popularity contest. You may elect a mayor who doesn't have any qualifications, um, as an administrator. And, um, in a mayor, if you have a mayor council with a town manager, you're going to have direct conflict between who's in charge, the mayor or the town manager. So if you have a mayor council, you can't have a town manager. But as a town manager, you're going to hire the best professional you can. And if you vote in Nantucket for a popular person to be mayor, you may not get anyone who has the experience to do it. So I'm definitely not a mayor person. I am definitely a council manager person.
What about the idea of town, of the president of the council?
Well, that's, I, I hate to beat Barnstable to death, but first of all, to answer one of the other questions, all councillors are elected. And the council elects a member of the council in Barnstable for a year to serve as the president. And the president is the ceremonial person who goes to events. And I think we heard that from our friend in Florida with that so-called weak mayor. But again, I don't think we should mix mayor-manager anyway. And the answer, Caroline, I hope you've heard is that the council elects one of their own to be the ceremonial head for a year as we elect a chair of our select board for a year. And so that's your ceremonial person.
Any other thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Hang on, Tom. Jeremy, be here.
Um, I think to ensure a larger recruiting pool when the time comes for the next town manager, and you know, because one day Libby may, uh, may, um, retire, you may not have that skill set in a community of 20,000 people. And you may need to go and recruit elsewhere. And I think that this is a very large administrative, um, job. And I think that in and of itself says it shouldn't be a elective mission.
Tom?
Yeah, I think one thing on the city, uh, excuse me, on the, on the mayor city council forum is that that may be something we, we want to, and I'll leave it, of course, up to you and the vice chair, Joe, to, but have a briefing from Collins Center on the structure. I looked into how, how it works in MGL the other day and the system is very laid out on how a, and weak, weak mayor and strong mayor and we, you could essentially take the same form as Barnstable and make it a mayor manager, uh, manager system. And there, we may not elect to do that for reasons we've already covered or we, reasons we may cover in the future. But I, but I think that that's, that's something that we should have a good answer for. Um, I, I could imagine that being asked, um, you know, if this gets put on the warrant or, or a town meeting, et cetera. And the other thing I would say, uh, is that to Curtis's comment, he may have meant it a little differently, but I just want to, the, the select board chair is anything but a ceremonial head. The select board chair basically does everything and sets the agenda with the, and meets with town admin all the time and they are, they are it. So, um, there, there is, it is a significantly more amount of work being chair of the select board than it is being a regular member.
But and is the ceremonial head Brooke now to various sessions and represents the town as chair of the select board. So yes, I agree with Tom that it's a bigger job, but functionally the chair of the select board is the ceremonial representative at events that I've seen anyway.
Beau.
Okay.
I'm, uh, I'm in favor of giving a different title. Just give it president. That way it just, okay, it's just the name. And yes, we understand that Brooke is very much in charge. But the difference between the mayor and the, the town council is that the, the town council elects or selects the town manager. And we weakened uh, the current contracts with Libby, which is the super majority to remove her with the super majority. We weakened it by going with a majority. So that's the one layer that you have to go through to, 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 you know, if you're electing a mayor and you are selecting, that's just the one layer that you have to go through. You have to go through the town council. So it just gives the town council a little more power. And that's why I think it's good.
Yeah. I know. I just don't want a conflict between a mayor perceived as the head of government and the town manager or whatever it is. I just, I see a potential for misunderstanding if it had police.
Right. So the mayor's the head of the executive. Right? So mayor's head of executive, a mayor elected. Our head of executive is the town manager and they're selected. And that's the real difference.
Well, if we, if, if we're looking at Nantucket and as you're saying, you get 20,000 people, your pool of mayor, mayoral candidates is Nantucket. Whereas if you have a town manager, you would reach out, um, a more professional.
I, I, I have to say, of, of kind of with this going around, I find Jeremy's sort of thoughts the most compelling. I mean, you know, I think that in the, um, I, I think that the town is too small to need a politician mayor sort of running things. Um, I think having someone who's technically skilled and has administrative or managerial experience along Libby or along some of the other town managers we've, we've heard from. I mean, it makes more sense. I don't, I don't know why we need to add a layer of sort of a, a, you know, an elected mayor and just sort of a higher level of political activity that just isn't, doesn't, doesn't strike me as all that necessary for a town this size. But.
It's also that really have to emphasize that the town manager runs operations. They don't, they don't do what the select board is currently doing. Um, they're really relegated to that sort of narrow thing. And I think that's a, should stay that way. If you're, if you're going to mirror this or, or use the model of a any Fortune 500 company where you have a board and a CEO, that's the model that we're going for. So I think that's what we use.
Uh, Donna, you got your hand up?
Yeah. Um, also, um, if the, uh, town council appoints the, um, town manager, chances are they'll work well with him or her, we would hope, um, because they've chosen that person. And that's a practice that's already on Nantucket. The most recent one is the, uh, police chief. And then there's Mike Burns. I mean, although I guess he's in and out of Nantucket, but, uh, definitely the police chief. You know, they did search committee and they found someone who was, they felt the most qualified. So we already have, um, examples of that here on Nantucket.
Fine. Thank you.
Quick. Yeah.
I'm good.
I just wanted to clarify what I meant by the chair doing everything is that the chair has to be aware of a lot more of the town operations than, than regular select board members do. So that they, they get copied on, I, I think a lot more than, than we do. Um, it, like in an operations perspective, but Dawn is absolutely right. Um, we, the select board, the what, the way we have it set up here is that whether it was the town manager or department head, Libby will send us an email, I, like I give the, the police chief was a perfect example. This, the search committee um, settled on a candidate and that was emailed to the select board and it said, you had X amount of days to submit a resolution of disapproval if, if you wish. And Libby asked for, you know, reach out if you do. And I don't think any of us did because we would have, we would have reconsidered, um, the, the hiring. Um, so that, that's, I would assume it'd be exactly the same thing in town council.
Gotcha. We updated it to three weeks, so two weeks to three weeks for that. Over that process. Okay. All right. Any other, um, thoughts, comments, observations from the public forums? No? All right. I guess what I would like to do is I would like to populate the frequently asked questions on the website. So um, I think everybody got this sort of partial list, the, uh, questions from the public forums that I think could form the FAQ, um, the, the, the second forum where I took some notes while I was on, on Zoom. Um, but I, I don't, I don't know what the best way to do this is. There are six, five, six, seven of us. Um, if everybody, there's probably twenty to 25 questions here. If everybody could do three or four, maybe that would be some overlap. And then I was thinking, Jeff, you and I play editor and if, so if I could ask you all to go to the YouTube sessions, the, the two sessions, you know, skim through it, find the questions, um.
Well, why don't, if it's easier, Rachel, you said you have some notes
Yeah.
from the one?
Yeah.
Why don't you send, I'll happily help the wheel of this. If you send the questions that you wrote down, I'll go through and try to pull them all out and then maybe I'll just break all of those out into groups. And we'll just send them around.
Send them around and assign them. Yeah.
People can just take them.
Is this the paper you're referring to?
Uh, if you have questions to.
No. You know, these were the questions who actually asked the two public forums.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I want to use those to create the FAQs with answers and get them populated on the website. Okay. So that's, that's actually a good idea. So Jeff, you do that. Um, with, did anybody have any, any issues or problems with the remaining the next, I guess, with eight or so meetings that, um, I sat around and had more reads set up. They all, everybody sort of.
They're on their calendar already. However, I have another question.
Yep.
Ultimately, you said we may be running short of Collins' money. Are we getting a supplement from somebody?
Well, actually that was the next thing I was thinking of bringing up. And the answer is, I don't know. Um, I am a little, I did ask Anthony to get back to us with how many sessions or, you know, um, that we sort of have credit left for. Um, I'm willing to go back to Libby and ask her for a little more dough if we need it, but it would be nice if we could avoid doing that.
Well, I, I guess my question to Collins is I've got this thing with a lot of red on draft charter. When are we going to see a draft charter that highest Collins helping us produce the graph charter? And if so, is that in their budget or are we going to have to ask for more?
Well, my, my sense from the, our little follow-up meeting, Caroline and Jeff, I was that, and correct me if you, you two think I'm wrong, but it sounded to me that, um, Collins Center felt that there was enough money left and enough Wednesdays or meetings left to finish the town charter as well as take the county charter and sort of.
Okay. Well, that's the question. If there is, let's keep going. But I would alert Libby that we may need, I mean, remember how they threw a lot more money, the SDR consulting group that went no place. So I think if, if Collins says we're going to be fine, let's work on it, but we should alert Libby that we may need 10% more or something to wrap it up.
And just to, so there's enough funding to cover, they think, potentially getting through the charter and county charter.
Right.
After that, that's when we would have to, that's kind of what we're talking about.
Well, that's, that's what they thought. Now, whether we actually, part of it's on us. We have to move through this stuff at the pace that they, you know, bring an outline to a, to the meeting and make our decisions, um, so that the, you know, that they can draft up a final charter, a final draft.
Well, I'm very frustrated with all the red. Cause that looks like those are things that haven't been brought forward with Collins' recommendations yet.
I certainly asked Anthony for a summary of where we are and what we have left to do.
Well, that would help to decide how about the money.
Okay. Any, anything else folks want to bring up? As long as we have the time and the Zoom.
A tactical question. Sure. To all the meetings in the future, is there a Zoom that has all of those easily import? We're going.
Oh, you, oh, you mean, no, the, the Zoom.
Of course.
A Zoom login changes every, every meeting. Yes. Yeah. That is an issue, but it works.
Maybe that goes on the fact sheet as well, though. But then, yeah, it changes. So we have to keep updating it essentially, right?
Well, you, this, the meeting posting carries the Zoom link for people to log in for every meeting. So. And on our, and it changes every meeting.
Yeah. And on our webpage, there's a link that says, most current agenda. If you click to it, it goes right to the agenda minutes page. It's, it's, I doubt the research.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Donna.
Yeah, I was just wondering, I think, um, we had what eight, you know, coming on Zoom, I can't see who's in the audience, but um, for both meetings, is there any way we could increase participation? Do we need to get more information out more often? I mean, it's, it's going great and between the current and the ink. I mean, it's, it's going great and between the current and the inky, but is the radio station? I mean, is there some way we can reach more people? Or maybe it's just 18 people are gonna show up? I don't know. And then 18 or 12 on Zoom? Um, is there somewhere we can gather more bodies?
Actually, I would direct a question to Tom, um, since you, you've been through more public. My, my sense is getting the 18 to 25 people in the two sessions wasn't exactly, you know, maybe we wish it was more, but it wasn't a bad outcome.
Um, right.
I have no idea. I mean, what, what typically or what has happened in the past with the town seeks public input?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I completely agree. I, 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 I mean, it's not a smashing success, but really getting anybody to these things is really difficult. I mean, we've, we'd hold these events for the rep and senator and it would be 17 people, 18 people. And it would be at times when you would think that people would be able to do it. And, and, you know, this is your state rep and state senator, holding a forum on a timely topic. So I, I actually think it's a relatively decent turnout. Um, but yeah, we should keep plugging away, of course.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we do, Donna, I think we do more. We keep, you know, we keep ourselves in front of the public in the various newspapers and, and media. And, you know, if we can keep getting 20 to 30 people, that would be fantastic, so.
Well, just for your information, this is about the level that the town government study committee had as a turnout when we were having our public meetings.
Okay.
So, and you know, the fact is, if they're interested, they can come. Maybe some people are saying, let's let the committee do its job and give us a presentation.
Um, that actually raises one last subject I'll put for the group, that group that, um, came up during that select board meeting that, that I attended and that I sent you all of, and I'm sort of an amended statement about. Um, and it was, but they, what I'm bringing up is the issue of, what do we all think of getting a sense of the meeting vote at, at the town meeting? And or a sense of the community vote on the, on the ballot, uh, which would be week or two or three after town meeting. Um, in turn, since we're not gonna be on the, I'm not gonna be on the agenda for town meeting, um, which it sounds like, seems like we're not. What do, what do you think about those?
Um, I think the, to bring it to town meeting will create a great deal of controversy and tension. I think if we want a sense of the community, we should prepare a statement and presentation of where we are and put it on the ballot, because first of all, you're gonna get more people to respond. And I think we can craft the question. I'd hate to get into a crossfire on the floor of town meeting over a sense of the meeting vote, which I just think the ballot, if you want to do it, the, we then control what's on the ballot rather than having it just randomized.
Right. Any other thoughts?
Joe, what's the timeline that prevents it from getting on? It would have to be the select.
Yeah, well, the, the, the timeline is, I think, is really two things. One is, one is, um, as a citizen, as a, as a citizens article, it would need to be, all of our work would need to be completed sometime in November. We're not gonna make that happen. Um, the select board was mixed in terms of, um, I, I thought they were pro, but I think they were really more mixed in terms of submitting this as a, a select board warrant article. Now, there are other issues I think that are more, have higher priority right now with the select board.
Yeah.
Um, and then just have, you know, how quickly, how quickly can we get all this work done? Oh, and then the last thing is, um, the, the two draft charters have to be reviewed, reviewed by K P Law. And that isn't gonna get done either in time for, uh, town meeting, so. Anyway.
Who decides if we go on the ballot as a ballot question?
Select board.
Oh, really?
Man, as I understood it, they, they have the power to put, you know, uh, referendum type questions on the ballot.
Has this happened before? What, anyone got an example of one that was a ballot question for a sense of, uh?
Tom, your hand up?
Yeah, there's been a couple of them. There was one for the small mesh fishing gear a couple of years ago. Um, I'm sure Jeff remembers, Jeff and Rachel probably remember others, but that this is, this is not novel and I'd be, I, I, as just one select word member, more than happy to, to support that as a non-binding ballot measure on the town election, May 21st, if I remember correctly.
I mean, I personally, I, I like the ballot better than the town meeting. I think you're dealing with a much bigger, you know, uh, number of voters or, or people's opinion you're assessing. And, um, you know, I think you're right. You come up with a couple of paragraphs that describe what it is, what's, what, what's been done and see what the vote is, so.
Joe isn't here, that would be.
Oh, sorry, Joe.
That's okay. Um, I, yeah, I mean, I'm all for it going on the ballot, but I think if we don't do sense of the meeting, we're whistling past the graveyard. I mean, we, we have to, and I'm not saying we have to do it in May, maybe it's another one, but it has to go to town meeting. So we need, that's the best way we're gonna get feedback is there. We don't get to circumvent the process. So I feel like that's the best focus group we could possibly get. And I don't feel like even if it doesn't go the way you want it to go, that, that's a failure. That just shows us where we need to do some work. So I think it's a good thing and I, I'd hope we could do both. It's great for people to know about it, too.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just for my, my learning curve, like, could the question just, is the question something along lines of, would you consider switching to town council? Like obviously with a preamble and some context, but what do these questions typically look like?
I, I don't know. Um.
What we're reporting, where we are, the commission and, um, are, I mean, it could be, are you in favor of proceeding or do you have further questions? I mean, you can make the response on the ballot.
You can frame it any way you want, but I, I would certainly be looking for a, um, a recommendation or, yeah, a, a, a vote from this population, from the voters that says, yeah, I would support this change because then we've got something we could go back to the select board as, as well as the town meeting at some point in terms of, um, what the voters have said. Um, we've got, I think, oh, Tom, you got another comment?
Yeah, I, I think in, when you came to present at the select board, I think John Giorgio had some comments on this, on how to proceed specifically. And I agree with Jill. I think that that this may be a longer process than some of us may like if to, to get the public awareness, the critical mass of public awareness to where enough people would want to support this. So I think the earlier you get the, you get the info on where people are at and a, and a concentrated group between both a sense of the meeting and a ballot measure will provide a lot of data. Plus, just as a select board member, um, as you stated before, Joe, town council is gonna have to put some resources into making sure that the chart, the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed to go to the legislature because it's gotta be right. Um, House and Senate councils and the committees of jurisdiction are not going to look too favorably on if it needs a bunch of rewrites and, and send back and forth. And the select board's gonna have to amend that. And if it's out of scope and then we'll have to go back to town meeting and all, all those kinds of things. So i- if I'm gonna vote to expend those resources on town council, um, I'd want that debt, just to speaking as a select board member, I'd, I would want the data from the two, um, to see where, what the differences are and where Nantucket is at.
Well.
And put it at the end of the meeting. It's gonna be a bunch of people who do not want this and they're gonna give you that feedback.
But who says it has to go at the end?
It's gonna get thrown, I don't know. Who said, who decides these?
Well, the clerk and the clerk in the select board decide the order. So I think if Tom's willing to weigh in and say we'd like it a little bit sooner, then that could be good.
I'm agreeing, we should do it on a ballot.
But, but, but Bo, why wouldn't you want it? It has to pass town meeting at some point. It's okay if it doesn't have the votes that you wanted. I mean, you seem to think, I guess I'm asking you, do you think that you're gonna get the votes you want at the ballot?
Okay. Right.
What Tom is doing is stipulating release of funds based on the data they get from town meeting, from this banter. So if you want to get it, you want the data, Tom. I think we get it through the ballot.
I don't think he said that if it failed, they wouldn't fund it. I didn't hear that. I think they're just wanted to get the input, but that, that's what you heard.
Okay, um, Donna, you're, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say, however you folks decide, um, it, it would be helpful if, if we can to ask why so that we can get some important feedback. But why they want it, why, why someone doesn't want it? I, I don't know if that's appropriate with the ballot or, or town meeting or what, but the more information we get, the more we can work with.
Yeah, you're not gonna get that through a ballot question, though. It's not like a open-ended question, so.
Not an essay.
But the, I guess that would go towards the town meeting where there might be some debate on it. But, um, I, 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 I could see the challenges with town meeting that's, you know, like Bo pointed out and stuff. But I've also seen people and things pass at town meeting and then resoundly not at the ballot. So it, I mean, it might be, we might get very different results and that, I mean, I guess that's how we could explain it. I'm not, I, I, I certainly would be in favor of a ballot. Um, I understand the reservations about town meeting and especially if there's some major, major big, which there al- always are and it is towards the end, it's not gonna be the larger public forum that we would hope to get the feedback from. But I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a, it's like surveys. You know, sometimes the way you develop them and do them, it's not necessarily what the answer is. It's also the, the background data of the analysis of what that means. And I think there's, I just don't want people to look at it and say, well, town meeting, you know, was very soundly, no, don't do this. So that's it, we're not supporting it anymore. I think it's just one part of the discussion and feedback that we're getting. I mean, certainly I heard a lot about elected town managers and the public forums and everybody else that I talked to was absolutely against that. And so I think it's just one feedback source. I wouldn't want to discount anybody's feedback, I guess.
My feel, my feeling is that since we all, we understand, and one of our criticisms about how town meeting works is that there's such a discrepancy in the numbers and also the type of voters from the beginning of town meeting to the end. And I say it because I think we've often referred to, um, the devotees that stay sometimes three days into town meeting, stay late into the night, um, as I have done. I mean, it, you, you have to really be into it. You have to really want to listen to the last bits. You have to want the whole process. Um, and that if it's only 200 people at the end, 250, and it started at 1,400, um, this, the self-selection process that gets you to that very small number is, is, um, probably statistically significant in terms of the ability to change the outcome of a vote. And that's one of our ma- major criticisms about the inefficiency of town meeting. So putting it to town meeting and knowing that it's gonna be, it come up at the end, um, I don't think that result would be comparable to the result if it were in the first hour.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, oh, Tom?
Yeah, I, I said data, but really Beau and Caroline's comments made me think what I, what I was trying to say was sentiment. And, and Caroline's right that it, that it's, it's the bulk of the information you're getting and what you're hearing. It's not, oh, well, you know, the town meeting vote was X to X, so that's the empirical answer on town council. I, I would never think of it that way personally. Um, I, I just think the more data, the more, the more data and sentiment, the reason why I think we're doing these forums, the better. And the more public awareness, the better, because this is a major change for people. Um, and I think that was echoed in, in both the public forums that, that we held so far in different ways.
Yeah, well, I, I, I think there was, there was concern voiced, Tom, and I think there was also, you know, people who were pro, I mean, who thought this was a great, would be a great thing. So, I'm sorry, Jeff.
No, I was just gonna say with the, the sense of the meeting and town meeting is, I, I'm okay with the, the ballot measure. And since the meeting at town meeting, I could remember recently, we did a sense of the meeting, um, weirdly enough with Tom's example on, one on small mesh fisheries, and then there was one that was a question on, um, whether or not the town should be investing resources in protecting public beaches, which was like the greatest unanimous sense of the meeting I think I've ever seen. Both of those were held right at the beginning of the meeting. They were right at the start. I think with sense of the meetings too is, I mean, I, I would have to do some looking. They're not common enough. There may be rules around those, right? They may not function like a foreign article, right? They may not be called, they may not be subject to discussion. If it's just a sense of a meeting and maybe this is the text that's there. I mean, I, I think knowing the answers to some of those questions would be important because if it's, if it's not debatable or gonna be discussed, right? You're, you're gonna gain a vote that's gonna be maybe reflected or maybe not be reflected, you know, three weeks later through a ballot vote. If there's no debate, I just don't know what the rules are around sense of the meetings for, for how those work or how they get sequenced in.
Um, kind of building on the unknowns, is it still feasible to get a sense of the meeting in front of ATM, in the front of the front of ATM meeting 2012?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what the rules are in terms of how a sense of the meeting vote gets, you know, scheduled or placed in the agenda, things that happen.
If it were the first item, as a discussion, it would be different than if it were the last item.
Yeah.
And it's, so find out either from Sarah or from.
Yeah. Nancy Holmes or somebody, okay, all right. Any other comments or thoughts this afternoon? Good discussion, that there was interesting conversation. Um, so the, as far as the frequent last questions, Rachel, you have some minutes from the Saturday. You're gonna get them to Jeff?
Yep.
And then Jeff?
Also, the whole list of questions around, maybe with little chunks for folks.
Yeah, okay.
It sounds like a plan.
And I have a motion to adjourn? Should I go? All right.
Get out of here.
Oh, I'm going down to, to the board meeting.
Paul in favor?
Hi.
Hi. We're adjourned. Thanks to everybody.